City of Animals, City Council. Regular session, Monday, September 28th, 2020. Animals Library Learning Center. Is one point zero.
From?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Lockhart?
Here.
Zomba?
Here.
Stout?
Here.
Capron?
Here.
Note that all council members are present. Two point zero pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rebecca, for those of our guests that are joining virtually, would you please give a rundown how they can reach out to you to get the council's attention?
Absolutely. So for those of you joining us on Zoom, many of you have done this before, but to review, you can do one of two things if you're joining on your computer. That is, you can raise your hand or send me a message in the chat. If you cannot find the raise your hand option, if you're on a computer, you should be able to find a participants button on the bottom of the screen. If you click on that, you should see a full list of everybody who is joining us, and there should be an option to raise your hand, and that will let me know that you would like to speak. When the mayor opens up that agenda item for public comment, I will let you know when it is your turn, and you have been unmuted. For the two people who have joined us on your phone, be aware that to raise your hand, I believe it is star nine on your phone, so the little asterisk symbol nine, and that will let me know that you would like to speak. If your name is not already on your profile, do please give your name, full name and address for the council, so they know who is talking.
Thank you, Rebecca. Three point zero approval of agenda.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Alan to approve the agenda submitted for this evening's meeting. All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Pos, nay. Motion approved, carries unanimously. Four point zero, motion approved, the minutes from the following meetings. Four point one, September fourteenth, twenty twenty, regular council.
So?
Second.
Motion by Alan, second by Kay. Discussion or changes council would like to make. There isn't. All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Pos, nay. Minutes approved, estimate. Five point zero, public hearings, none. Six point zero, proclamations, none. Seven point zero, whole business. Seven point one, twenty twenty CDBG downtown revitalization grant award.
This is just a letter from the state stating that we were awarded the grant funding.
For those that are not familiar, this is downtown facade revitalization, and the grant that the City of Animals was awarded is an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. We do need approval on each of these.
Not the letter, just for information.
Alright.
But the rest of them.
Any questions the council has on that letter that was submitted? Not seven point two, Iowa Economic Development Authority contract.
Has Patrick reviewed this?
No.
I would, I would appreciate that. I would think it'd be a good idea for this, for him to review all of these contracts and agreements that we're going to enter into on this.
Do we need to table now? Are we going to prove the subject to his review?
Well, we've got until what, November, to approve all of this stuff? So I think we could table it until next time and approve in October.
Seven point two through seven point one zero. Rich, would you be so kind as you make that as a motion to table?
I will make the motion to table seven point two through seven point ten until the next meeting. Second.
Motion by Rich, second by John, to table seven point two through seven point one zero on our own business till the next meeting. Further council discussion.
Just that we need to have Marion removed from page two, article one point one point zero.
What's under the second? That's the second.
Full further discussion?
Could we check and see if Tom is on Zoom meeting? Rebecca, do you see Tom?
Yes, I do. I will unmute him.
Hi, this is Tom Bruce, the, from EC CAG, and I helped prepare the application for the grant. So the, if you have any questions about the contract with EC CAG, I could answer those, and then I could provide you some additional information for the required resolutions and policies that, those are the items that are listed under the EC CAG grant, and those are required as part of receiving the grant.
Tom, these, these items are basically just a template for each individual community that would have received CDBG grant funding to approve.
That's right. Yeah, there's, there's pretty much form documents that are provided by IEDA, which are the required policies. And I could give you just a really short summary on kind of each of those documents if you want more information.
Council. Does the council want more information at this time?
It's a wait until Patrick.
I don't know if you can hear clearly, Tom. The council is just looking for the city attorney to review, in a sense, for his approval, his blessing, before the council makes final approval.
Okay.
They're not looking for any, any more detailed information regarding these, these items.
Okay.
If there's nothing else, again, motion by Rich, second by John, to table until the next council meeting. All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Pos, nay. Motion to table, carries unanimously. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. So I can be available for the next meeting as well.
Alright, thank you very much. Eight point zero, new business. Eight point one, request for proposal for wayfinding signage. Derek Kleonsman.
Good evening, everyone. Derek Martin from Jones County Economic Development. One of the things that I've been working on with the City of Animals, I've assigned the downtown task force to put together earlier this year for the assessment, one of the things the group's been doing is going through that assessment, seeing what areas we might be able to impact, and help make the community even better. One of the areas we settled out with wayfinding signage, you read back through the assessment, it talks about making sure you can get places in the community, one of the hardest things for people to come, to know where schools are, social attractions, how to get to downtown, all those sorts of amenities that make a town vibrant. So one other thing we looked at was, we looked at some wayfinding signage, some of the documentation in that assessment talked about, once you get people places, then it's easier, you need to be able to move them around as well. So the downtown task force looked at some ideas, considering wayfinding signage, doing a signage audit, see what kind of signage you needed, where they might want to go, and we asked a couple of contractors to do that in the state, to give us some idea on what that might cost to do, and we come to town to do an audit. We got a number of different options that weren't comfortable, so we decided instead to bring an RFP forward to council and go out to that, resubmitting this RFP to those companies and others who might be interested, seeing what we might be able to get in terms of audit and design plan and signage and color, pretty much everything from start to finish up to the end of the design phase. This would not include installation or fabrication of those signs, although some of these companies might do both. So the hope is that we can send this out, get some quality proposals in terms of proposals, and then bring them back, give you the recommendation from the task force on which one we'd like to go for. Based on some of the input we got the first time, we're basing it or guessing it to be somewhere around two thousand dollars or less for this RFP, and then hopefully next phase, once this is all done, we'll get some cost estimates from them as part of the RFP, on what fabrication and installation of plants might cost, and probably offer an RFP at some time next spring to do the actual wayfinding fabrication and installation. If anybody has any questions on the request for proposal or not.
Is there any questions for Derek?
Basically, you just want our approval to get more information, isn't that?
This would bring us proposal back, see what it would cost us to get a wayfinding signage audit and development plan.
Have you talked to any businesses yet on this? What business do you have?
We wouldn't talk to any businesses, because most of these are geared towards attraction, so anything like the Godless Mary Station when it was here, or if they become so permanently that we gotta sign it in the downtown, it wouldn't be business related in terms of like businesses can buy signs, that's not what a wayfinding signage plan does. It tends, so it'd be like a school or downtown, maybe something specific like an antiquated museum or museums this way, sort of signpost along the way. So it's more geared towards those types of amenities than it is.
Generally, you can hope to use for years, that's no case specific, or that business goes down, or one big thing is parking, unless you know where the parking lots are, there's a lot of people don't know where all parking lots are.
Moved approved.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich, to approve the task force to release a request.
I guess, I don't know how it's worded. I mean, I was gonna send it out, unless we wanted to do that, because I had a contact from the side.
Thank you for sending it out.
Is there any public input? Rebecca, is there anyone virtually that has a comment?
There is not.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich, to approve. All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Pos, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Derek. Eight point two, request for appeal of service line repair bill for four zero four zero East Second Street. Joey Knight.
Hello, my name is Gary Knight. My mother is Joy Knight, who lives at the, I believe they stated the address at four zero four zero, which is actually is four zero four. And I sent a letter up to the council members, and then some of you hopefully received them. I can read that quickly. Under about August eighteenth, and this August eighteenth date is kind of unsure to me, because on the billing, there was no date of service. So I don't know exactly what the date was this repair was done. I do have the bill with me, and it's very vague. Anyway, under about August eighteenth, the subcontractor for a land called Corvack started boring in front of four forty Second Street. Shortly thereafter, they discovered a water problem during the boring process. Someone called, we don't know who called. We don't know if they called the city, or if they called the plumber first, but the plumber was sent to repair the problem. No notice was given to the owner of said problem. Plumber came and repaired the problem immediately as it was declared an emergency. As the city clerk that I talked to on the phone later declared an emergency, because when water is gushing, that's the emergency, and that's your water, and you own it, so you need to stop. And I understand that. A few days later, the homeowner, Joy Knight, received a bill from Shea Plumbing for the amount of one thousand thirty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents for the repair. Corvack obviously damaged the water curb box, rod and valve. Joy Knight called the water department about this, and she could not afford to pay the plumber the full amount of the bill. Linda said the plumber would be paid by the city, and Beth would set up payments, so Joy Knight could afford to make four monthly payments of two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. The plumbing bill should go directly to Corvack, as they initiated the water problem. My name is Gary Knight, Joy Knight's son, and my name and phone number on that. I believe that you all get a chance to look at that. So this whole thing is very, very vague. Seems to be a couple of different stories. The bill, I can read it exactly what the bill states here. Sewer line did curb stop at four oh four Second Street. A land subcontractor found leak during boring project. Now it has three excavator and labor, three hours, I'm assuming that means, for two hundred and fifty dollars, for the total of seven hundred and fifty. One material, curb box, rod and valve, for two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents, and then seventy percent sales tax. So my, my mother did not call me about this right away. She didn't even really know anything about what was going on. She's eighty-seven years old, eighty-two or three, eighty-two. And she is on fixed income, so we help her along with things as we have to. But this, I called the city about this, and they didn't really get any help on it at all, other than nobody would give me any explanation about what actually did happen and why it was repaired. I found out that from the city, that gave me the, the name of the permit of the subcontractor who did the boring. She didn't have a phone number for them, but they are out of Wisconsin, I guess, Corvack. And I found some other information out that I guess he's hit several other water lines here and there. So it seemed awful funny to me that there was no problem whatsoever until the day the boring company shows up, and then all of a sudden we have an emergency, and they have to come in, date it up right now, and fix the problem. So I have no proof of anything, no pictures. I don't have a date that this was actually done, and City Hall would not give me any of that information. So it seems to me like there's some kind of issue here about no notice to begin with. She should have been notified, and then she should have had the opportunity, because according to your ordinance, she owns that stop box, that valve. Is that correct? I believe that is correct, that she owns that, so she has the right to call in and get her own estimates from her own plumbers to get that repaired. That was not followed either. All of a sudden, it was done, and City Hall, somewhere along the timeline on this whole thing is very gray area. We don't know when City Hall actually knew about it, and my mom had some notes here, something about, she said to let the water department know, but he said, whoever that was, I don't know, under notice, that they already had it fixed. So apparently, there wasn't a breach, and if it was a major breach, then it's an emergency, and you need to fix that, I understand that. But my sister was on the property one of those days, and somebody came up to her and talked to her briefly, so I will let her address you on exactly what she knows most about that, because I wasn't there at the time.
My name is Eva Atwood, and Joy Knight is my mom. I live in Waterloo. I was there that day, actually, I was looking back through photos on my phone, I had taken pictures of the sidewalk, because I was concerned they were breaking up the sidewalk, and she'd end up having to pay for it. So I'd taken pictures on my phone, and those were taken the week after the boring, and my picture dated July thirteenth. So the boring took place that week before. And the only reason I was there, I was there in the backyard mowing for mom, because she had fallen and broken her wrist. And a gentleman was hollering at me, because I was kind of in the backyard, you could see me from the side yard. And apparently, he had gone to the door, and nobody answered the door. So he asked if I was the homeowner. I said, no, my mom owns this property. And he said, would you please tell her that we hit up, we hit, oh, they contacted, he said, we ran into a leak, is what he said. We called the water department. They had to fix the leaks, so we could do our job. Your mom will probably get the bill. And I must have had a funny look on my face, and he said, well, it was on her part of the property, so she will probably get a bill. I decided, you know, I'm mowing, the lawnmower is still going. I said, I'm sorry, I don't really know what's going on, because I don't live here, but I'll be sure and let mom know. And I did, told her all that, thinking that she must have had some, some idea of what was going on, and she had no idea of what was going on. But, and at that point, I had no idea that they had called a plumber to have it fixed. I assumed the water department took care of whatever needed to be taken care of, and so I wish I would have followed through with mom, around that. I just had no idea of the problems that this may have caused. But is there any questions that you have? And I'm sorry, we don't know a lot, but.
Thank you. If I may, the, the whole thing seems a little bit out of the ordinary to me, because I don't expect anybody to sell me an object that I have no control over, I can't touch it, I can't work on it, I can't take it in, can't put it out, can't do anything with it, but if it breaks or has a problem, then I have to pay. Especially when you have a water plant, and that stop valve is what controls your product. Your product is held up there in those pipes, and if you don't have a stop or a shut-off valve to shut that off, how are you gonna, how are you gonna control your own product? You're losing your own money by not owning a stop or a shut-off valve. Anybody who sells a liquid owns their own shut-off valve, so they can stop it. It's, it's like buying a car for somebody else, and you can't touch it, you can't drive it, you can't do anything to it, because the law says you can't. But if something happens to that, they'll send you the bill. So this, this whole thing of ownership, if I decide to, if we decide to sell a house and shut the water off, because we're gonna leave it set empty for a few months, we're not obligated to the water department then, are we? Because I stopped the water, so I don't have any contract with the water department. So therefore, if there's a breach or a break in that water valve, who's responsible then? It wouldn't be me, the homeowner, because I stopped the water.
Correct. That's correct.
So then, you actually own that, then. If you, if you don't own it, then you have to pay for it yourself to fix it, or there's going to be a lot of your product running out.
The curb stop is purely the property owners. If Jim has to turn off water for our system, we have large valves that control the water flow through the city. We can turn off the water for the whole neighborhood. The individual's curb stop is for that property. So if she wanted to turn off the water for her property and not use it, that's where it gets turned off.
So if my manager doesn't pay a water bill, and you need to shut their water off, you'll just go shut the whole street off then?
No, I shut, we shut their curb stop off. Everybody's required to have their valve.
You're using their valve to shut off their water, the valve that they own.
That they requested we shut it off, or it was shut off for non-payment.
For non-payment, correct.
Right.
All I'm saying is, you have an object here that somebody owns, and they have absolutely zero control over. None. Liability wise, you can run your contractors, you can, because it's on your right of it. It's not even on her part of the sidewalk, on her side. So the whole issue here is, you have a water plant, and you need to maintain it yourself to be able to have control of all of it yourself. Without getting into this kind of an issue, I feel like it should just be put in the budget, that you take care of your own side of the water system and raise the water rates. That's what everybody does, all the utilities do it. I happen to be on some boards. That's what gets done. When you want to run a business properly, and you want to control it yourself, without getting into these sticky issues of who owns what and how we're gonna do it, you just man up, you own it, and you add that cost into the bill. Not all of a sudden blindside, blindside some old lady with an over a thousand dollar bill for something that she doesn't even know what happened. I saw no photos, I saw no proof, but I saw no even.
Time.
So, anyway, that's all I got to say. Does anybody have any questions for us?
Here. Thank you, Carmen. Thank you, Ellen. I'm Derek, and I work for the City of Animals. I run a water plant. A lot of things, like you said, is very correct. I didn't, a lot of people don't like it when the contractors come in there. I had a problem when they first came in, the first, very first trip they did, which we had a total of four. First one they didn't like, because it said, City of Cedar Rapids has their water stop to the house private. From the stop, that's the main, is owned by the city. There are a lot of cities that are around that are owned from the house to the main, and this is one of the stories too. These are some of the issues that isn't fair on anything, but at any given time that we're losing product, like you said, we see that there's an issue. We don't go and pick out a little old lady to pick up. And I just want to let you know, I wasn't there, because I was on a COVID relief. I did get called by Cody Schaefer, which is the plumber that was on there, and he's been doing this for many years, and he's been trusted by me. And he went down to look at it and saw that the water was leaking. And it was something that we could not go ahead and charge the contractor, because the contractor did not do harm to it. Sometimes in this, like I said before, in this town, you can have right now a hundred small leaks, and they don't surface. But when we do see them, we have to fix them. And there's a point of not saying it's an emergency, but it's urgent to get that done, because we are losing plenty of our water. I, well, like I said, I was not there. I really apologize for the inconvenience of your mother and not being notified, like she should have. But at that point, I know contractors were there, trying to get that water fixed, was the biggest issue. We didn't think this would, would come up as an issue. Part of the dig that was dug over there, that the contractor did, was pretty much paid for. Part of the dig that was dug over there that the contractor did was pretty much paid for in a round. Because if the digs started off as a, say water was coming out of the ground, we go down to that, do a repair. Nobody knows where it's coming from, whether it's a main or a service line. We're digging it up and it's ten times worse. At that point, it was a thousand dollars sometimes. And I'm not trying to justify anything, don't get me wrong. But at that point for a thousand, I believe you said a thousand thirty five, is that right?
A thousand thirty or something like that.
And that is, I'm not saying that that's good, I'm not saying it's bad, but that's kind of an average of what we see. On a very small situation, sometimes they give something two thousand dollars and that's just the timing, the time of the plumber to be there. Cody was on site. The, the contractors were using him to fix all the repairs as we go along. And it's just happening to get noticed and we did. I do apologize for the inconvenience for your mother. Trust me, we weren't trying to pick at her by knowing. I did not know who she was. And I owe, this isn't gonna be a problem with you guys. That's what we normally do out here. With that service line, again, all the way from the main to the house is a private line. This is the way the city's been set up ever since I've been here and ever since it was in any ordinance years and years ago. Not saying that I agree with it, but that's our system, I hope it was set up in the past. If the council would like to change that, all that's totally up to them. And that can be discussed, but at this point, that's what we said as far as the private lines are at. Thank you.
Is there, is there anything with all this contractor you're coming through with Boring and such a thing? Is there anything in the contract that's, you know, if damage is happening, that they're responsible for them? Is there any verbage in there?
There is, but this was not, Cody was there. Cody, would you like to address the?
Uh, Schaefer, uh, Schaefer, okay. He was. Um, you were called by four back. They were running a bore line up Second Street. They'd gone down Third Street and had some other issues. And anywhere that they found a service line or a curb stop, they were, and about to cross it. They were pot going, which is hydroresistive down to actually visually see when they cross the utility. To be sure that they did not cause damage to it. So as soon as they got down to the, the water, the service line itself, then there was, there was water at that point. So they physically have not done any mowing in that area yet. They were just doing all their plumbing with potting and hydroresistive. Gas, waters, sewer, anything that they were crossing that they needed to see, that was in their path. There were a few service lines that did get hit by them as they were in town. They obviously got billed directly from us. I want to change that forward. We fixed three service lines, there was sewer service. And a storm sewer, I believe, along the way that we're, that we're hit. Every summer this happens. It's just part of growth that things like that happen. And then again, this unfortunately wasn't something they, they actually physically had not touched any of the utility. Other than spraying water on it and sucking it out. It's a great job that I control, so.
Do you, do you have a date on when this happened, Cody?
Somewhere around the twenty sixth of June, they hit the first one on Third Street, which were the Mike and Christine Marvis. Yeah, and then there's a, it took them a number of days to get past our station. Roughly a week after that, so about the same timeline that.
From the research that I did, the, they had, they had hit a few of them. And this, this corner that they were working on where your, your main was, where your stuff was. They were already nervous about hitting things and that was a busy spot. There's a lot of different lines going through there. And they, they did back that out rather than bore straight through. And it's not, it's, you can't damage same very easily with a back because all you're doing is using high pressure water. And in a vacuum, you're just sucking air out. It would have been nice if they had hit it because it would save you, you're bombing a lot of money. I'm in the same position. I'm on the council and I can change it, but I've checked with Marion and some other places and. They're set up the same way. We take care of that curb stop. I'm not saying I like the idea, but. According, in this, in this, in this, at this time, this is the way it is. Your mom's gonna have to pay for that. And, and I think the city is, is doing everything they can to help her out. Unfortunately, it's her money that she's gonna have to spend and maybe you didn't have to help her.
I was just gonna ask, so when you came to fix it, what exactly did you see that explained? I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't a break, what it was lame or what did you do exactly?
So it was leaking at the curb stop itself, fitting where it connects to the, the shop. So we dug back like three or four feet, crimped it off, changed the curb stop and then opened it back up. Hours there. An relatively easy fix. Heard that some question said.
So was it leaking on the main side or the?
Um, boom, so. You know, obviously it was leaking on the street side of the shop of the curb stop because we had to crimp it. Had it been on the backside of the curb stop, we could shut the curb stop off and then put it there, open the curb stop up there.
And I want to kind of say something about if the people of the, you know, if we owned the curb stops, the water bills would be a lot more. Yeah, so in the long run, is that cheaper or more expensive? You know, if the water bill's gonna be forty, thirty, forty dollars more a month, that's three hundred and sixty dollars a year. And how long is your mother gonna, you know, be there and all this? In the long run, it's gonna be cheap. So, all right.
Thirty or forty dollars a month? How many people is in the, the town of Animal? So you're adding this to everybody's bill, not just one person?
Cody, what's, what you've seen as far as the. The, the repair that had to be done to the curb stop groundwater, was it because they were deteriorated?
So it was copper, rastor, pretty standard stuff. Same as what we put in today. So just, I mean, we live in Iowa. It heats, it freezes, it thaws, the ground moves a lot. So just something that, it's hard to say how long it had. Now, three years ago roughly, I was called up to the same address after the city removed a tree. And a number of weeks after that, the stump was still very, very wet and wet all around it. They kind of just thought that it was, at first, the first thing is that it was just the wall street feeling popping down and some stuff. Still leaves out water. This was like, there was an excessive amount of water. I mean, enough for the, the water department to be like, hey, would you come lift this? There wasn't enough water at the time to fill Saint Water. Tested the chlorine, see if it was coming from the distribution system. But excessively wet, so. I can't say definitively if there was a lot coming from the curb stop, which was right beside it, the tree or not. But it definitely wasn't perfect. But sometimes water just runs in your path. Once you get a freezing frost, it might go down in the grounds, it's coming back.
So if, if I may ask, how then was it declared an emergency all of a sudden? And she didn't get the right to get some bids to have someone of her choice come in and fix that?
I'm hearing, yeah. Again, Jim Hance of the city and most of our department, we find anything that's leaking, it's, you take it. Whether the water department doesn't really sub this out, ask to a contractor. Keep an eye on, that's what we care to get that fixed. Does that, like you said, you have a gas in your car and you want to plug that up immediately? The water is pretty much in the same situation with us because we need to get it fixed that night. You can't go out to where a customer is gonna go and get bids and then it's two weeks later where we're losing that water, which I'm sure you understand that. So when we're there, that would have been, I mean, as Cody called me and told me what was going on. And I said, if you're certain that that is a private, private issue, then go ahead and fulfill the customer. Or the resident. With the other ones that were there, like he said, they physically hit them and he know that. This one, we know they didn't get to hit that and the issue was that it was leaking and it did have to be repaired. Now, on my side, and I think the council would know. Anytime I have an issue out there as a water leak and I know it's coming, I have to get out, out there and fix it. Now, I can get water leaks and possible water leaks. I've seen water come out of the ground and I know the council, we went through this about a year and a half ago. Water came out of the ground. I was ready to go get boomerang, get it dug up, take a look at it, and all of a sudden it disappeared. And that was groundwater. I cannot physically say that I can build the city, have them go through the anguish of the bill and not go over the fact that was water. So like in your mother's case over there, we would have never done it if, if it wasn't for the actual eye view of that water. And knowing that it had to be repaired. So we can't just sit there and sit on it for a while. We had to get that done. I know at that point Cody wasn't that, later on at, in the afternoon, I would have seen.
I mean, it's probably like two hours of calling.
Yeah, so we have to call.
If we can't get to it that way, the, you call another local contractor, whoever can get there the most timely.
Yeah, and then when it comes to Iowa one call, we have three hours that we have to wait. So Iowa one call, all the, all the locations have to be complete. And here at that point, they have to try to get this taken care of. Now, if we go to the point of saying, okay, we're gonna shut off the valves over here, shut off the valve over here between two blocks, which is very hard in this town because it's a very old system. We have to do a boil on everything. So then again, and your mother, later on at, on the door, saying, you gotta drink the water, boil everything. And that's how that works too. So we got a bunch of, I know caution that we take that we don't know about, but we do go to the point of being very truthful. And everybody knows me, I'm a very truthful person. I have to guarantee Cody said that that was an issue over there and I told him, I asked him to fix it. I didn't trust him. Trust me, I've been working with these guys for twenty years now. So just one of those things, I understand you're the level on this and I really do sympathize. But we do have to get the work done and the pre-see a leak gotta be fixed.
Okay. I got that information. Now, the only other part of this situation that I didn't care for was the fact that Cody directly billed my mom. Came to her house, she got the bill. The city got involved and they paid Cody. And then they made up payments for my mom. So now she's been trapped into a payment situation and she doesn't make payments, she shut her water off. When directly the bill went from him to her and we would have managed that. But somehow or another, I don't, I don't know where the city gets involved in loaning out and paying bills for other people, but it doesn't seem like a very. I, I understand it seemed like you're trying to help her out. We help her out, that's our mother. We take care of that. We don't want her getting entrapped into, now I owe the city water department over a thousand dollars. And if I don't make my payments or I can't afford to make my payments, then they're gonna come and turn the water off.
That's not what happens.
Well, I don't know yet.
We do not shut her water off for non-payment of the payment plan. If for some reason she couldn't make those payments and you're more than welcome to just pay it off. You can just pay the balance of it and there's no payment plan. There's no, nothing's locked in. If for some reason she can't make the payments and we don't, we can't make other arrangements with her, we can always assess it to her taxes. She doesn't have to get her water shut off, none of that. I did not tell your mother that at all.
Is there any interest involved on that?
There is not. There is nothing. It's just a courtesy. We understand that she had an emergency situation and we do that when customers have emergency situations. We try to work with them so that they can keep their water on so that everything gets repaired. There's no interest, there's no, none of that. It can be paid off at any time. So you can pay it off tomorrow if you don't like having, her having to make the payment arrangement. This was purely a courtesy.
But that's probably what we'll do is just pay it off. But the whole thing would have been a courtesy to us if we were to have the whole situation explained up front. Um, this is what happened and this is why we're fixing it. And instead of getting a bill that doesn't even have a date on when the, when the dig was or when the repair was. And we just very, very big, no explanation. And when I called to talk to you, you didn't give me any explanation.
That's all I have is the invoice. I would have been more than happy to get you more information, but we didn't get to that point.
You told me to go to a line.
You said you wanted to go after the.
The same day the self contractor was there pouring is when the leak happened. And so. Okay. I guess we're done talking, thank you.
So there'll be no action on this item? Gary, I'm asking you, are going, either you or your mother will make the payments or pay in full? Eight point three, request for relocation of parklet at Tucker's Tavern until the end of the season.
It's already happened.
So the, there were street repairs needed on Booth, which is where that parklet was located. I was contacted as it was being disassembled. If it could be moved, I had spoke to Eric Load on the phone then. And asked if he could just move it out to the front of Tucker's location on Main Street. It was already agreed upon that Tucker's would have one. We had others on Main Street. And I knew that Teresa was instrumental in bringing this idea to the city, the parklet. So I, at least with my impression that she continued to want it, asked Eric, we can set it up off. He said that would not be a problem. Did not give thought to the fact that the city or the council had voted to have two on Main Street and the rest were on the side streets. The side streets were chosen because, or Tucker's, the side street there was chosen because it existed and we did not have to have it on Main Street. So now because the council decided only to have the two, this is now before you to approve to have this third one through the council.
How long is the repair gonna take? How long is the repair gonna take?
From my understanding, they were gonna be done tomorrow.
Really? I saw them working all day, but I didn't see what they were replacing, water lines.
Yeah. Mike Dearborn's place across the street.
Will be done tomorrow.
What's that?
It'll be done tomorrow.
That's my understanding that they could be, this could be moved back on Wednesday, since Tucker's is closed on Monday and Tuesday. They wouldn't be using them anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should be done tomorrow unless something bizarre happens.
Problem solved.
She had a lead line, the story that is, is that we had to get this completed when I found out Mike Dearborn had his whole still existing lead line. We needed to get that removed and he was very anxious to get that done in case that water took off into his basement. And as the investigation went over, we found out that Teresa never got her lead line redone during the street moves. That's our bill. So we're paying for it and I finally got a chance to coordinate with Cody to get this dug up. We've been waiting for a while since you've been busy and everything going on. We got into it and we scheduled it Monday because she wasn't open and Tuesday she'd be there open late for she not open at all. Again, so tomorrow should be wrapped up. It'll take a little bit before we get the asphalt back in. We already have the Leashase as the concrete scheduled with the general, as we speak.
Is she aware that it can be done tomorrow?
She, yeah, she was there today and she got with Mike Schaefer. We got all the interior plumbing completed, I believe, right?
Yeah, like four blocks up and we cleaned up everything inside, repiping to the meter. And it's ready for concrete and asphalt for her service line. But the new property will be dug up in the morning.
So can I ask who requested the move to Main Street?
It was just a phone call that I didn't receive.
But was it a business owner?
It was not, it was not. Employee or representative of Tucker's.
Well, since they're gonna be done, and even if they can't use maybe that parking spot, they could use another one. I'm gonna say move it back over to Booth Street.
No. What, what areas there need to be resurfaced?
To approximately twelve by fifteen areas over there, which lie over the top of over the top of their both Mike's and Teresa's service line that we're doing that. Three tapers, Teresa, and we have to date down tomorrow just to shut off the port to Mike Dearborn's facility.
So the Tucker's one was like right under their outdoor seating area, so. But there is space between that, but they put it back.
So sidewalks tend to be torn up, just the street?
Part of the sidewalk where the service line went, but that is scheduled with Shane, and he's got somebody to repair that. And if needed, when we get to the asphalt, we get the dirt, we pour that out, we can easily pull that out, re-Asphalt.
So I just, I just wanna make sure that moving of the parklet back around on Booth Street is not going to be in the way of the construction that is still yet to come.
Well, it can be moved, but yes, it's gonna be in the way because we still have asphalt coming. We can dirt down as, as it settles, and then when we come back, it wouldn't be hard to take the parklet out, put asphalt down and put it right back in.
Well, or, or you can wait because it has to come out October fifteenth anyway. And you could wait until October sixteenth and do the asphalt.
You're saying when they're doing everything last, the asphalt move back and then asphalt after October fifteenth is declared done?
Yep.
Can it work out for you?
Are they gonna cement it? Are they gonna cement that or are they gonna?
Yeah, you have to reset up the asphalt, correct?
Yeah, we're gonna asphalt the street back, is what it was. And the sidewalk is gonna have new curving. And just chunks of that can be done this week when he gets to it. But the asphalt, we're gonna let the rock settle because we're not packing it. So we're gonna wait, and we're doing that ourselves.
The concrete is two four by four channels. That'll be replaced.
So on Wednesday, move the parklet over back? There was no further discussion. I'm gonna move to eight point four. Eight point four, discussion of possible action on trick or treating and animals.
Um, so I can't hear Leanna.
You should come over here. Thank you.
I've had several people call or email the chamber, send messages asking for some trick or treating this year. I guess I've been involved in that before, so that's why I asked. What was gonna happen this year? Here we are. I know that my cell is gonna have trick or treating. I submitted some, whether it's other towns, Manchester, or Little. Or the small towns around here, most are gonna have it. And most of them are giving it all the same, other people don't participate, leave their lights off. Yeah, so most of your kids out.
Could, could you repeat that last bit? You were a little quiet. I couldn't hear.
Yeah, if people didn't wanna participate in trick or treating, they could just leave their porch lights off and their parents didn't want their kids out this year, they would just.
Y'all excited to what we mean? We didn't say we didn't have it, but still do it. Can't keep them trick or treating. And either way, it's pretty, it's pretty.
Did you have a date in mind? All the, the actual Halloween night?
That's a Saturday this year.
Yeah.
I give the animals and people a lot of credit. There's a lot of common sense in this town. And if, if they feel that it's safe to, to put a bowl out there in their porch and let the kids get some candy, fine. They think that they may have a problem or they might not be feeling good, then they won't. And my wife and I have already bought two gigantic, four gigantic bags of candy. And we're gonna give, if those kids come by, we're gonna make sure they get some candy. I just really, of all the kids, the people that suffer the most, I think, is the children because most of them don't really understand ramifications of what's going on. And the less we can stress them out, the better, I think. That's just my own opinion. But I'm willing to hand any kid that wants some candy, plenty of.
What was your address?
Sixteen Hundred Cracker Ridge Drive.
What's your favorite kind?
Halloween then would be October third, Saturday, October thirty first is rich.
You wanna specify a time?
What has been in the past?
Yeah, usually around eight o'clock things get quiet. Our street was hit pretty hard over here.
We need.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we would need a motion to move forward, so twenty-three dollars within that.
I will move that trick or treat time in animals that is on Halloween night, October thirty-one, from six to eight P.
I second that move.
Any further discussion, council? We have a motion by Kay, second by Alan, to set trick or treat night in animals, October thirty first, between the hours of six P M and eight P M. Any public comment? Rebecca, is there anyone virtual that would like to speak to council?
Uh, there is not.
With that being the case, all those in favor on the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thanks, Leanna. Discussion, excuse me, eight point five, discussion of possible action on pumpkin fest events. Pumpkin roll, fun run, pumpkin carving, decorating contest, and spear curl contest.
The animals in the chamber are comments. Obviously, pumpkin fest is gonna be the same this year. We're still trying to have some events. I guess the biggest thing that we're asking for is, we're gonna try to do everything on a Saturday morning. So the biggest thing I guess we're asking for is the Walworth to be closed from, I think I said, nine thirty to ten thirty for the pumpkin at all. And that just requires that people bear at ease to the top and at bottom, they clean up all the pumpkins. It's very quick. And the other thing, it goes to use one at a time.
But don't forget the doggy thing.
Do you want these moved one at a time, or?
No, they can be just in general.
Then we usually did the five K, that's not gonna happen this year, so we're gonna try to just do a fun run. We would kind of follow the same route as the ranger run that we do during Christmas time. We don't have any street closures or anything for that, except for people sitting on the sidewalk. We don't have very many signed up at this point, but we know if that's gonna happen. And we're gonna have a pumpkin decorating contest, our painted pumpkins. What we'd like to do, and those is set up the nodes on Main Street, and so to try to draw people to go to downtown stores and stores. So the pumpkins, we set out people from a little voting spots, they can pick those up and then vote in the businesses that they choose to go in. Scarecrow contest really isn't a chamber thing, but I'll tell you about that. Jackie did the same thing last year, Jackie Larson's side of the gears. People are gonna take a scarecrow and then they just attach it to the poles downtown. And then people vote, they send their votes for that. We are gonna have the way up again this year that's close to the public, but it was reversed parade in the afternoon. It's all at the L C C. From one thirty to three o'clock, people can sort directly and see the pumpkins that people brought in. It's really all the pumpkin fest that people want with. So the other thing that kind of got brought up is, there's a lot of people that walk their dogs on Main Street. A lot of people that don't clean up after their dogs. So I asked if we could maybe do the chamber or something to put some of the bags on the poles that are open that dispense the dog bags. I already got two people that said they would pay for those boxes. So I guess I'm just asking permission if I got like four boxes.
As, as much as it is a necessity due to the fact that some people cannot clean up after their dog has done its business. Although with that said, it is not part of today's agenda. So if we're gonna have further discussion on this topic, it needs to come under eleven point zero at the time. Advise the council that you still cannot make any decisions related to it. It could certainly be on the next move in the agenda. Are you requesting that?
I am.
But in the meantime, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the pumpkin fest request.
There's been a motion by Rich, second by Jeff, to approve the various pumpkin fest events that the Anna has known. Any further discussion?
I got one question. Leanna?
Lea.
Is there any financing that's needed?
No.
Everything's been taken care of?
Yeah, that's all through the chamber.
The only thing you're really requesting is the closure of Walworth from the hours of?
Nine thirty, ten thirty.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any comment from the public on virtual?
Um, not on the agenda topic, but I've had it confirmed for me that it's very difficult to hear the members of the public. So if any more people would like to speak on an issue tonight, they may want to get rather close to one of the microphones that's already set up.
Thank you. We will advise. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Motion carries unanimous. Eight point six, resolution approving the hiring and setting wages for park and recreation interns.
Move to approve, second.
Any further discussion in council? Public comment in the building? Comment from the virtual public?
There is not.
This is a roll vote.
April?
Aye.
South?
Aye.
Zomba?
Aye.
Markart?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
From?
Aye.
Resolution to accept unanimously. Eight point seven, resolution approving the hiring and setting salary of an intern street superintendent.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'm gonna give that one to Alan. Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Any virtual public comment?
There is not.
This is also a roll vote.
Markart?
Aye.
From?
Yes.
South?
Yes.
April?
Yeah.
Zomba?
Jeff.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion to approve the resolution carried unanimously.
And I would like to say that I thought it was really neat that the street department took the initiative to fill those awful holes in the private alley. And I know it's a private alley, but you know, if your neighbor has a hole in their yard and you can fill it without costing you a whole lot, it's just what you do to help out your community. In my opinion, obviously.
I'd like to add something too. I've noticed that the street department has been quite busy lately. I've seen a lot more of them than I have in the past. Just wanted to bring that up.
I'm gonna stay with the agenda if I can. Eight point eight, discussion of possible action on city administrator position.
I ask that be on the agenda. I think if you look at the seven point one through seven point ten and all of the things that are going on in our city, we dare not delay in deciding what we want to do for a city administrator.
Do you have somebody that's exceptionally good job?
We do.
And I don't know if we, I don't think we necessarily need to go looking for anybody else.
I think we can post it on the door.
I think that's all we gotta do is if we wanna, yeah, Beth wants it on a permanent basis. We would just say need to post it for ten days on the door if that's what it takes.
They need to back her in the corner and she'll say.
Or if she, if she wants more time to decide, I'm willing to give her more time too. Just whatever you want.
I think we're gonna have to be looking for a city clerk.
Well, Beth and I have talked about that. In that, because they've only been two months, approximately two months, three months doing this, and they've gotten. In that, because they've only been two months, approximately two months, three months doing this, and they've gotten along all right. But we've talked about whether or not there may be a need for a temporary or a part-time person to help out with some administrative items. But that's, that was kind of the, the intent of letting them get their feet set. Because they're still going through getting the new accounting system set up and getting some of this done that maybe that'll help facilitate the need or lack of the need for a full-time person.
If need be, could like a fully position be created, you know, it might be assistant city clerk. You might be city clerk. He might help out with the wire department, just kind of a rotating. Right, the bill games.
Could maybe even do some administrative work for the police department or for the LCC or fire department, whatever, to keep it full time.
Yeah.
But, you know, if there's qualified people part-time too and whatever. But we've talked, kind of talked about how maybe this could be set up. But I think to get to the full extent of it, we need to get the accounting system fully set up, operational, to know then where we go from there.
So this accounting system kind of takes over for some of the work that someone else would be doing.
It does.
See if maybe get somebody that would come in on, like Thursdays and Fridays at the end of the week to button everything up so you can get ready for the next week.
Well, that, that's what we were, you know, part-time, what we were looking at. And I think Beth was saying something about doing some, I don't know, uh, clerical.
Right. So like either someone that could do accounts payable or, you know, payroll or they'd have to also be able to do utility billing if we needed to fill in there. So it's gonna just be kind of a more specialized little things within each of our duties. But the new system will make everything much easier.
Good.
There'll be a lot less manual entry.
We need a motion for her.
Well, do we need a motion to post it for the ten? Okay, I'm gonna make the motion to post the opening for ten days on, on City Hall, um, front door.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan, to, uh, post for the city administrator's position on, you're just posting front door of City Hall. Am I understanding this correctly?
Yeah, that's all we gotta do.
Well, I, I will certainly concur with the council that my interactions with Beth, since she's been named the interim city administrator, she's done a very good job. Uh, she's provided information in a very timely manner, uh, detailed information. For the most part, everything I've inquired has been fulfilled. With that, I believe, my opinion is we owe the residents and citizens of Manamosa that we need to find out who, who is available out there and not, since short side this, but just posting it on the door of City Hall. We, we just, we don't know who would, else would be interested in this position. And by not pointing it out in, you know, whether it's some, uh, government sites indeed is another one. Uh, I just, I think we're doing an injustice to the city of Manamosa. And with that, I'm, I'm still, you know, I'm not, it's not meant that Beth can't do the job or I don't feel she can fulfill it. I think we need to do this in a, a little different path.
Well, I'm gonna disagree with you in the fact that we tried that the last time and we got unknown quantities, unknown qualities. We've got a known quantity, we've got a known quality here, and the motion's been made.
The other thing that I, I, I hate to do this, but I agree with Rich on this one. I've been observing since I've been here and everybody in this room knows how I felt about how the uh, things are going in the city and there are things that I'd like to see change. And since Beth's been here and the people that I've talked to and my interactions with her, it, it, I can't think of anybody that could, could do any better as far as the, uh, rapport and, and the, uh, way people get along with, with everybody, each other and, and, and her. I, I see no reason to look any farther. Um, she's doing the job now. And I think she's doing a heck of a job. One of the things I did notice and I, and is, is as you said, I get on my, on my emails and I'm finding stuff on there and I'm actually getting information. Or before I wasn't getting information. I, I, I like what you're doing. I'd like to keep her and I'd like to put her in that position. That's my, that's why I agree with, uh, Rich on this one. I'm willing to listen to anybody that's got a disagreement on that, but that's how I feel.
Further discussion?
I've heard a lot of positive things from the community, so that says a lot.
Public comment? Uh, any public comment virtually?
I do not see any.
Again, motion by Rich, second by Alan, to post for the open city administrator's position, uh, at City Hall. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
No's nay. Motion carries unanimous. Eight point nine, renewal of liquor license barement.
Second.
Thank you, Kay. Motion by Rich, second by Kay. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
No's nay. Eight point ten, renewal of liquor license at Manamosa Bowling Center.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
No's nay. Motion carries unanimous. Eight point eleven, review and approval of current bills.
Move to approve.
And catch a second, Angie. Any discussion regarding the bills as they were submitted?
I would wonder about the uniforms. I don't think who wears them. I know that some of the guys wear uniform shirts. Is that what it means?
Um, yeah, which one was, was?
Well, there's a uniforms that's eight eighty sixty-nine and one that's a uniform allowance.
So some of them are the police department.
Oh, okay.
So police uniforms and then the other ones would be water.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Another question I had, um, check number sixty-five eight ninety-seven. The police station air conditioning, I'm assuming that's still the old police station.
It is, correct. It, um, went completely out. And it was a very special unit. And so, um, Mike Chamberlain had come up with a solution. That was about the least expensive route we could go.
Um, I do have a question on, kind of a general, but I see sixty-five eight four nine for boomerang for storm debris removal. Is that everything or will there be more for removal or?
Um.
Or are we?
I think that was everything, but I don't know that for sure. That came afterwards, so I think that's the whole thing. I can check with them.
Any other questions on the bills? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
No's nay. Motion to payment of the bills carried unanimously. Nine point zero, city administrator's report.
Well, as we were talking about the accounting software planning, our, our big plan and all of our information stuff is this week. So if you leave me a voicemail this week, it might not be answered till Friday. Um, so Monday through Thursday, we're doing pretty hardcore dive into data from nine AM to four PM every day. Um, so that's good. We've been learning a lot about different functions where we've gotten with the software. Um, but it is a little intense. I'm still working with the auditor, um, getting all the documents for them. They probably won't do our do the actual audit process all the way until February, so I have a little bit of time to get them documents. As far as the debris removal, um, I did submit a preliminary FEMA request for reimbursement on the last day it was possible, um, anyway. So hopefully we're in and we can possibly get reimbursed for some of that debris removal. And I'll probably work with Chamber to see if we can kind of estimate where we were at. We're thinking probably twice that amount. That's all I've got?
Does council have any questions for Beth? Thanks Beth for the report. Ten point zero, mayor and council reports. Ten point one, mayor's report. Not anything reported this time. Ten point two, council reports.
Library met on Monday. They will be offering, um, raffle tickets on the quilt that will be displayed in the library. Phil C.C. and John Hatcher deceased, um, gave, uh, an old map frame to the library. I couldn't find out where I lived, even though I could see the street. It's really nice, so everybody should go look at it. And they're going to do a fundraiser, then levy type fundraiser as the year goes on.
Uh, just to clarify, the, the quilt is a Friends of the Library fundraiser?
Oh, you're right. I keep forgetting that that's two different things. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Gary, for the report. Somebody?
Well, this is the term. I don't have anything for perks here. If I had this one quick thing I'd like to bring up for, for, um, Beth and Shane or maybe Jim, but we might look into, uh, doing some first into the DOT. I know the Mon, City Monticello purchases things that state at discounted price, the DOT. Probably got anything from Snowblaze, uh, broom, street signs. I mean, last month we had two hundred dollars for vests, Walmart, I mean, that type of thing, the work boots. I still, City Monticello uses it a lot and so I might, might check with them and and see. I know if you order anything, it's just an online, uh, ordering process and it'll be delivered just out to the, the DOT shop right up around the edge of town. So, I mean, you can order the salt through them. I talked to Brian Kelvin a little bit about that.
We, we did. We have the, we did have a contract with the DOT for.
Have we bought, have we bought stuff from them in the recent past?
Um, last year we got all of our salt through them.
Okay.
And we get paid to them to, to pay the street for that.
Yeah. I would just see other stuff. I mean, it sounds like there's a wide range of stuff and if it's at, at cheaper rate, it's, he's looking into for clothing or whatever.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I understand that for all those, I would like to see. Yeah. Yeah. I think if you, uh, he said Monticello uses a ton. He'd be on the road with them.
So, no, no other reports? Uh, eleven point zero, public comment, right, it was not on the agenda. Start with those in the house. Uh, is there any public comment from people in attendance?
I did a survey.
Could you state your name?
Richard Steiner, Iowa, in South Carolina. I did a survey there of our street and speeds of vehicles and the numbers of vehicles. And, uh, about a third of the vehicles that drive down the street are speeding in my estimation with bad experience. One was a motorcycle and he was exceeding fifty miles per hour. But I'd like to have speed signs put up there at Second Street at the top of. Yeah, they don't, and now at Fifth Street, we let people know what the speed limit is on the street. We have kids playing out there. We have people walking dogs on the street. We've got people pushing AP carriages and stuff there on the street. Now, how quiet is it when they don't use the sidewalk? But they know, they walk down the street. We have deer crossing the street. Count of eight there, one, you think, crossing the street. So people have to slow down. I think that throughout the whole town. But, uh, I took that survey for, at different hours, six thirty in the morning until whenever, but I pretty much covered it all the hours during the daytime. And then, like I said, about one-third of the speed of people in the street, uh, excess of thirty miles per hour, thirty-five, forty.
Does the city still have a, do they have a speed trailer? I know up top of Ford Street a few years ago, there was one of that.
County has one, um, we did have one a year that I got here. Something faulty with it and I'm not exactly sure. So I was just inspecting. I believe so. It's some sort of electronic part or piece that I, I began to look into. Some you can rotate around different streets.
I had an officer parked down on the street for about ten, fifteen minutes when they was parking right in front of the house with a violator. Had four or five people that are consistent violators on the street. We hollered at them to slow down. I don't know, that result was a can in the air and, uh.
You mean waving at you?
What's that? You mean you're just waving at you? Yeah. But, uh, yeah, it's, it's something that people don't slow down, particularly when there's that much people out there walking and something else and kids playing on the street. Uh, just requesting signs to put up. That would maybe, I talked to, to how, uh, yeah, to residents' houses there about the violation. And, uh, that's about it. So, slow down or you're loving it speed and there's a lot cheaper, slower down on the ASB.
Thanks for that information, Dick. Is there another public comment? Rebecca, is there anyone virtually who'd like to address the council?
I am not, uh, seeing anybody in the chat or, um, raising their hand, so I will go with, uh, no.
Okay. Twelve point zero, closed session.
I'll make a motion to enter into closed session for Iowa code twenty-one point five, one C. Say it.
Patrick, are you? Out there?
Uh, I actually don't see Patrick here.
I don't, Patrick is.
Oh, okay.
We should require with him for affirmation prior to going into closed session, but he approves. I would think that.
Did he ask for this before?
Yeah, he asked me, he asked for it to stay on here.
Yeah, it's a telephone number, something we can try to. Well, still, did, did it get resolved?
I, I haven't seen that this has been resolved.
Okay. Well, there's really not much we can discuss without the. Well, there's really not much we can discuss without the.
Well, I mean, I'm not trying to knock. But I'm trying to offer some, a lot more information than.
Right, yes.
With that being, I guess I would ask Rich to, Beth, unless you object.
Well, or do you want to try calling?
Well, we're all here. We don't want to have a special session.
Either we.
My free.
At the table.
Yeah.
Please, my heavy.
It was nice in the hall.
At this point, we are still in open session.
Definitely need to have his input.
What's going or not going or.
I could play off the bridge. Why, why not?
No, you can't pick up. Stuff for the city, plenty all the time.
That's right. You're right. I'm gonna have to find my macarons and winter socks.
I have a feeling that what happened is the room, the room has two settings, unoccupied and occupied. And sometimes it can't tell when it's occupied or not. So, the next time we'll, we'll come in and we'll, uh, make sure that it knows that it's occupied for the evening.
Could be unwiny too. Well, that's what happens when you get old.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not that, you know, that wouldn't apply to me, but just, just say, some people it does.
Well, well, Beth, do you think that's adequate?
Yeah.
Patrick, would you rescind your motion?
I will rescind my motion.
Uh, John, I bet you will.
Yes.
Rescind your second. All right, so I'm just going to jump to thirteen point zero, German.
So moved.
Rich.